I'm gonna join with computer audio, I'm gonna hit pause.
Sorry.
I didn't have to say that, she says that for me.
Alright, so open the meeting at six o'clock, we're being recorded twice. Trying to pull up. Okay, so first up, we have meeting minutes from the twenty second. We can back of those minutes, or they might be, I think those are a hold off. Alright, so that's for next week. Alright, so we're gonna move that to next week. Um, so, audience participation, I've got Highway, Dave, do you wanna come on up?
Yep.
So we have, for you, um, what were the things on here? The new hire and was there something else?
Yes, there is.
Not let you take it away.
Okay, um, we start off with Mass Grant.
Yep.
I talked to Ray, I talked to, um, a few other people about this, and they agreed that we should apply for a million dollar bond for the project.
Okay.
For backup, instead of, well, how Ray explained to me, it's that it's, it's a lot easier to pay out of our pocket than their pocket.
Okay.
They are so specific, how much is this, this and this, it takes them so much longer to process the project in increments, how they want it. So, once we apply for the bond, once the project is all done and over with, we just write them a check and it's all done.
Okay. So what's the process for us applying for the bond?
Um, I sent out an email to Sarah, and also to several names. Yeah.
Someone with Cabot, or no?
Uh, in finance, left hand treasury.
Janet? No, um, I don't know all the names of the accountants, cuz they're all new.
Yeah. Anyway, I sent them, I sent an email out to them.
Okay.
And I wait for a return on them, give me a call back.
Okay.
What usually does, I believe, what I haven't told Sarah, what she does, is she's the one that lines up with a, a bank for the loan, it's low interest loan. It'd be probably a year, but it would be done in less than a year, paid for.
Okay.
That's what I know about that part.
Okay.
Also, on the pre-contract information here, it says authorize, authorization, authorized signatory. I put my name down on here.
You need us to sign that for you?
Uh, no, I do not. I just need to make sure that, I wanna make sure that you all agree, take care of everything, you need to vote on it.
You're the expert. I don't wanna deal with it. That's why we pay you the big bucks. What do you need the, the vote to say?
Um, that you, that you, you agree that I should take the authorized signatory of the project for signature.
Okay, so I would make a motion, um, to authorize Dave Waldron as the signatory for, what's the project?
Mass Grant.
Mass Grant?
Yeah.
Um, is there a second? Any discussion? So this means that he can sign off on things and he doesn't have to wait for us?
Have any questions? Okay. No questions, okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're doing good.
Good job.
Um, as you can tell, Russia stage is all done, finally.
Yes, and then did you have to dig anything up for the water? No?
Well, we did, they did, they took, they took out a big old stump, right about that big around out of the road.
Okay.
Um, and I believe Ray wanted me to do one more thing on this, that's about, um, the money that the town's gonna put towards it.
Okay.
It needs to be put aside for it, earmarked or whatever.
Encumbered?
Encumbered.
Yes.
Okay.
For that, yes, for one fifty.
Okay, um, so you've been talking, is Ray, has Ray even started to work with you?
Yes, yes, yes. Um, that's, he gets, he put in his, uh, his bill in the last week.
Okay.
So, it's, it's not that bad.
So, um, as far as encumbering that money, do we just, we need to let our finance team know?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I, I'll find out more information, I'll let exactly what we have to do and I'll let them know.
Okay, perfect.
And also you guys too.
Okay. Keep the administrator in the loop also, please.
Okay.
Okay.
There's nothing on it.
Okay, that's that. Next one is our new hire.
Okay.
Well, we're right, please.
Line up.
Would you like to take a peek of the, his resume?
Yeah, please. We've seen the before, right? This is
I believe you have.
Nice to see you.
I see you too.
Did you have a good Thanksgiving?
Yes, I did.
Good.
Very enjoyable.
Alright, so Raymond, I know we've talked to you before, and since then, you've gotten, you've done some more license, is that what it was? You've done some more?
Yeah, that's all that's holding me up for coming to the town was to get the hoisters license covered.
Yeah.
I ended up taking care of those.
Great.
The only one I wanna end up doing that you guys asked for is a four G.
Yep. So, um, we had met with Raymond, when, when did we talk with you? Was it?
The only one I talked, no, the only one I talked to was Garcia.
Okay, it was just Josh.
Yeah, I came and talked to him in the park line, caught him one day on my way home from work.
Okay.
And that was it.
Okay, and so he had let you know, you would be outside except for this one license.
Yeah, he said, you know, if I can end up getting a test date within the nine days, yeah, he could push us forward, but meantime, his test date was perfect timing, everything rolled out. I had plenty of work at the company I've been working with now, so.
And you live locally, actually?
Down Harris Road.
Yeah.
I just purchased a house in May.
Oh, cool, okay, I grew up on Harris Road, towards the end. My mom's a crazy lady with the golden retriever.
No, that's fine.
I'm not gonna tell you she's not crazy.
I believe I see you guys walking.
Yes.
I've seen you before.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so tell us a little bit about your experience in this area.
Uh, with everything on highway, I've got seven years working for D R sweeping, doing road construction, catch basin rebuilding, concrete, structural demolition, architectural work. I got blueprint reading skills, I worked in the aerospace field for a little while, my father is a corporate aircraft mechanic, so I got my hands in on that. I went to Westfield Trade for four years, I got my degree down there for automotive. Two years I stayed in school, two years I was out working, because I kept, I was on the honor roll for those two years. It was I can make money instead of being in the feds, so it worked out well.
Good.
So, that's why I ended up going, and now I'm up here. My dad told me, he said, hey, get in with the town.
Yeah.
Like, you'll be set. You know, he made a bunch of money working for all these different companies, and it all came down to the end. Needing insurance for my mother with her epilepsy, he kind of imported medications. So he ended up working for the town of Westfield for ten years after he retired at the age of forty-four.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's nice when you're local too, to be so close, and if we have an emergency, um, you know, having to run out and
David has your phone number, yeah, cuz I think you live closer than Dave, if it not Matt.
Yeah, James. James.
Yep. Do you guys have questions that you would like to ask?
You know, I'm not listening.
You're listening.
So, pretty much, you know, I ended up instead of traveling to Westfield, you know, I had my ears open for different towns. Westfield, they have their own back truck, which I already operate for the past, you know, five years, and the pay wasn't quite there all the way, you know, and I really didn't wanna go work for Westfield, I'd rather be local in the community that I live in.
Yeah.
So, that's why I ended up sticking it out here.
Very cool. Um, Dave, do you have any questions or anything you wanna add?
You know, I've, I've talked to him, I don't know, half a dozen sort of times already. He's always stopping in, asking if I need anything from him. So.
My idea of the car is, Dave's happy.
We're happy.
It's his department, I'm happy.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Cool, so you'll, you have some mechanic, um, skills to bring to the team too, that's really awesome.
Many.
Great.
You work on these?
Work on diesels, I've worked on airplanes myself, with my father, smaller engines, like pipe sucks and stuff, you know, you know, he did large corporate aircraft and jet engines and stuff, but, yeah, pretty much, I can tear down an engine, put it back together and get it running again. But I work now. I can tear, but, but I can literally, I've taken so many LS engines apart from the GM six point O's, so it's like the eight point ones. I can tear down a block and have it all put back together within eight hours.
Holy crap.
That's how good I've gotten, head gaskets down, all my buddies bring them to me, I tell them, thousand dollars, there you go, you'll have your truck by the end of the night, and they have it back, not a flaw.
That's awesome. Whoa.
Well, when are you starting?
Well, did you start yesterday? Oh, right now, we're waiting on that, didn't see it for his court check to come back.
Okay.
So, we gotta get that in the other day, so.
I'm not, I'm not sure how long it takes to come back.
First time I mailed one in, I have no idea.
Well, there shouldn't be an issue on my court check, otherwise it wouldn't be here right now, I'm working where I've been working for previous employers.
Perfect. Excellent, um, so I, I, so I think I'm, just, I hadn't done this in a while, we make a motion to hire, and then it's based on the, the court check and the
Physical.
And the physical, thank you for a reminder. So based on the, um, the completion of the court check and the physical, and then as far as a pay rate goes, that would go, whatever is in the union.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I would make a motion to hire Raymond Halte.
Yeah, you got it right.
Um, to the position of Blanford D P W, um, with, uh, oh my God, why can't I think of the word? With the completion of the court check and passing the physical, what's the word I'm looking for? Based on, no one's gonna tell me, huh? Contingency!
I had it, I wasn't gonna
Pay extra. Um, okay, contingent of
Passing, passing.
Second physical, thank you. Is there a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? On favor? All right, Mary, question?
We don't have a D P W.
Oh, yeah, it says D.
Highway.
Yeah, fix that to just say Blanford Highway, please, thank you. Um, okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Awesome.
There's more paperwork for you.
Works for me.
So are you in the purple house on Harris Road?
Well, that's what it used to be, I believe.
It's not purple anymore.
I've seen pictures of that house.
I will forever know it as the purple house, so.
I don't know why they painted it that color.
Sometime after you get to know me a little better, I'll tell you why.
Oh boy, DJ, I mean, Tom.
It is a beautiful house.
Yeah.
It really is, and you know what, the first You did? Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
You'll see what you left, we'll see what you left behind.
Yeah, I had bears there every single week, it was like every week. You did the foundation with Norm?
Hmm?
Norm?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I grew up in Wyben, right below Montgomery there, where he was. I worked on his trucks when I worked at Skyline Services in high school. Delma, exactly.
Very cool. Welcome aboard, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Alright, you're good, Dave?
I'm all set.
Okay, so we've got a couple more people with us tonight, and I wanna move up so that they don't feel like they have to keep mounting you later.
Oh, this, yeah.
Um, alright, so, uh, chief mater, I would make a motion to go to new business F, is there a second? Uh, discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Thank you for joining us.
Charlie.
So we have a sprinkler quote.
So every year, the sprinkler and fire alarm system in this building has to be inspected.
Okay.
Last, after last year, Josh asked me to streamline it, because there was multiple vendors and their work was questionable.
Okay.
The new company, this was their first year in, they found a good number of items that need to be done.
Okay.
Um, they can do all but one, and that's, there's a problem with the fire pump switching over when the generator kicks in. So that's another vendor I'm trying to track down to come get generator work, but all these items that are on there are required in a fire code. If this was a private business, I would have sent them an order of notice telling them they had to do it.
Okay.
So, because of the cost, in conversations with Josh, he said, oh, that would probably, cuz I have a price before he left, he says, probably come out of building maintenance.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
On the price, I didn't know if that line item would support that, being only halfway through the
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I think it will, there's nine thousand dollars in there now, I believe.
Okay.
Or maybe that's, I have it here, so I think, I think that's where it should come from as well.
I agree, and then if we need to move funding later, if we have any other pressing.
Exactly.
Okay.
Sure.
Isn't that generator supposed to check, like, uh, automatically, like, generators, like with the Verizon building? They go into a check mode to make sure that they're gonna start if the, uh, power goes down to the building?
Yes.
Is there, is there a check system on that, or?
There is for the building itself. The switch gear for the fire pump is separate.
Yeah.
And currently, there was no test or check on that.
Okay.
So when they were here doing the annual inspection, they found that when we come off the street power, go to generator power, the fire pump was not engaging. So there's a problem somewhere in the switching. So a generator company could repair whatever it is with the generator or inside, but the fire pump or fire sprinkler company cannot do that work.
But this never set off any alarm because it, it never self-checked?
Uh, there is a lot of problems with this alarm system not doing self-tests.
Yeah.
Over the summer, the fire pump ran deadheading for at least two to three days.
Oh, wow.
Hoppy came in on the weekend and heard a noise, went into the, um, fire pump room in the back of the building, and it was hot in there from that pump just deadheading.
Oh, wow, so how much wood is that pump right now?
Uh, the pump is fine, fortunately, knock on wood, it wasn't damaged for dead, from deadheading, but they, with the new alarm monitoring company, they expanded what it can monitor, so when, anytime the fire pump kicks in, it sends a signal, Hoppy and I will get a text message. If we don't respond within, I think it's thirty seconds, they automatically call dispatch. So any fire trouble alarm, just like the security system, will get notified, and if we don't acknowledge the text in thirty seconds, they'll call dispatch, and if it's a trouble alarm, they'll just, you know, probably ask for, call you or I and say, somebody needs to go check, you got a trouble alarm, you got a, water flow was not something that would have been reported before under the, with the old fire alarm transmitter, which is a problem, cuz if you freeze and break pipes in here, we got sprinklers running, we probably wanna know that before we created a swamp.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so this is, I'm thinking we should make motion not to exceed four thousand eight hundred, because there's a five hundred dollar possible replacement fee down here for the flow meter. It says, uh, remove and send out flow meter for service calibration, reinstall, if fails, will replace for additional five hundred. So I'm thinking if we make the motion not to exceed four thousand eight hundred, that would cover it, does that make sense?
Yeah, and then the generator work will be separate, I'm just trying to get
Okay.
A couple different quotes on that.
Okay. Um, so I would make a motion to approve the quote from Fire Service Group uh, for fire sprinkler deficiency work, not to exceed four thousand eight hundred dollars.
Almost.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
So I'm gonna sign here. Today's the very Do you need this copy, Chief, or is this something that?
Uh, yeah, you can just put it in my box, I'm leaving tomorrow for North Carolina, so I won't be back till next week.
Hope you get good weather. Okay, and I heard we had a fire in town the other night, and the, everyone responded wonderfully, and it was really well.
It was, um, old construction is the only reason that house is still standing. If that was built after nineteen seventy, it would have been
Really?
Because it was true to the sole plate of the house, I'd say sixteen inches of it completely burnt away, and that was probably like an eight inch diameter beam.
Wow.
Probably burning for a couple days, burnt the floor joists away, but if that was a newer home, it'd have been long gone.
So it had been burning for a couple days and they didn't realize?
I would say it was smoldering for twenty hours minimum.
Wow, that's crazy.
Yeah, very fortunate.
I'm glad no one was hurt. Thank goodness, that, and then the water thing, and I was like, oh my God, this is a
So why would it have burned down if it was a new house?
Because the, the new wood is smaller, and it burns something, oh, this beam was probably that big around, and that, the older, uh, I think that turn of the century, I think the owner said that was built.
Oh.
It's harder wood compared to the stuff today.
Yeah.
In this town, most of the old houses, the beams are made out of chusman, which died off because of the plight, that was fantastic wood.
Yeah, well, that's good. Thankful for that.
And then, since I never see you guys anymore, um, one of the grants you signed through Mima for a portable generator for the training center or post office building, uh, that's been awarded seventeen hundred dollars, so when I get back, I'll start the procurement on that.
Great.
Submitted a state grant for ten thousand five hundred dollars for new turnout gear. Uh, we're working on a six-town regional federal grant, it'll be north of a million dollars for all-new breathing apparatus. They're about thirteen thousand dollars apiece
Wow.
right now. We have fourteen of them. So it's Blanford, Russell, Chester, Huntington, Montgomery, and Beckett. That will go in, well, we hired a grant writer, that'll go in tomorrow to them, and if it hits, it says, it's in excess of a million dollar federal grant.
Are those the pieces that we've been putting some money towards each year from capital?
Summer, yeah, we did the bottles.
Okay.
Last year was the bottles, the, the air pack themselves, like the backpack part is what the grant looks at, they look at the age, all of ours are two thousand seven and two thousand six, so they're old enough where the feds will look at them favorably.
Okay.
And everybody who went in is that age or older. So I'd say we have a, you know, a better than fifty fifty shot of getting it.
Great.
Um, and the good part for Blanford, Huntington has agreed to be the fiduciary, so we don't have to go through any of the nightmares or that.
Mary, question?
Uh, do you know if they're going to hire a, some, a person who will follow the grant, there's, there's an awful lot of work to the federal grants.
Uh, these are pretty simple, um, so once we get awarded, the money will be, well, the, the letter goes to the town of Huntington.
Yep.
Each community gets billed separately. So instead of Huntington trying to manage the whole one point, whatever million it comes out to, Blanford will get a bill from the vendor for whatever our price is, you know, a hundred and something thousand dollars, and we'll pay that, that way Huntington's not on the bill, if one community is slow in paying, they're not on the hook for it. Um, these grants are pretty straightforward, I had numerous ones in East Hampton, one was seven hundred ninety-five thousand, the other one was over a million, and there's, the administrative burden is very little on these.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
They make them fire chief proof for a reason.
Awesome. Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yes, you so, enjoy your trip. Alright, who else? We have Caitlin here with us, and then, so we'll do Caitlin and then we'll do Jennifer, um. So Caitlin is here from Caitlin Marquise from the Health Hampshire Mass in Motion. Hi Caitlin. Um, so we had we spoke a little last week about the Mass in Motion, um, and we figured we would ask Caitlin to join us and talk to us a little bit about what it entails, um, because I know there had been some questions to see if we wanna participate or not, so thank you for joining us.
Sure. Yeah, do you wanna start with your questions, or do you want me to start with just giving an overview?
If you could just give an overview, I know that in the past, we've worked with you for the, the mapping and for the, um, the truck, the food truck that comes, the farm truck. Um, so I guess our question overall is, what, um, what sort of participation are you looking for going forward? What is it that you're looking for, and then what, um, events or sort of outcomes would, would come to that?
Yeah, so thank you so much for having me, I appreciate the opportunity to talk with all of you about this, um, and it is, you know, it's definitely been hard for a lot of towns to kind of get their arms around, um, and the reality is, because there's, it's not super, um, specific, you know, what, what is, um, done with this grant. So, Mass in Motion has been a program through the Massachusetts Department of Public Health for about a decade now, um, and we, Healthy Hampshire, have been running a Mass in Motion program for that time, um, we've been, um, seated at the Collaborative for Educational Services, and, um, for a long time now contracted by the city of Northampton, who's held the grant, um, and now we have the opportunity, because the Department of Public Health is doing a re-procurement, to, um, just think, rethink, you know, how we want to do this. So, one big change that's happening is that the Collaborative for Educational Services is now applying as the lead applicant, so we won't be a subcontractor anymore, we'll be the lead applicant. Um, and since in that time, we've gotten additional funding and, um, started to work with a lot of other communities in Hampshire County outside of the original four, we only had four communities we were working with under Mass in Motion originally, so that was Amherst, uh, Northampton, Williamsburg, and Belcher Town. And, um, so we thought this was a great opportunity to really try to expand, you know, the number of communities that could benefit from this program. Um, and how it's worked in the past is essentially communities that partner with us, um, mostly have access to our staff time, and so, um, you know, the goal of Mass in Motion is to work on the social determinants of health, so things like the built environment, you know, basically the environments in which people live, work, and play, whether that be the social environment or built environment, educational environment, um, that, um, impact their health outcomes, um, and Mass in Motion is particularly focused on policy systems and environmental change, so essentially, you know, sort of the higher level upstream changes, and so I think the two projects that we have worked on in Blanford have been really good examples of that, um, the mobile market kind of being an environmental or systemic change, you know, bringing a new food access point to Blanford, and then, um, the walking maps really sort of being the groundwork for looking at healthy community design, and what are some, you know, improvements that could be made in Blanford, um, to make the community more pedestrian friendly or more walkable, and so um, that's the type of work that we can do under this grant, um, we are not really putting in any huge requirements of town, so a lot of towns have that question of, you know, what administrative or financial resources do you need to contribute? Um, financial resources, I would say zero, um, and really in that, you know, in that department, you only stand to gain, and we are putting a little bit of money in the budget, um, for a line item we're calling strategic subcontract, so it's like if we decide, um, you know, through whatever process, that there's a project, um, that could benefit from a little bit more funding, that is some, you know, a small amount of money that could be subcontracted, um, to towns or to organizations, um, within towns. Um, and then, um, we also are putting funding in the budget for community engagement, that's a huge, um, value under the Mass in Motion grant, and so you know, if you wanted to do some kind of community engagement process, a survey or a planning process or something like that, um, that funding could be really beneficial too, because we could make sure, um, folks are really supported to engage in that process. Um, and then, on the administrative side, um, you know, we really want to give communities the freedom to engage in the topics and in the ways that feel most important to them. Um, what we're looking at is kind of building off a governance structure, we've been developing, working on developing for like a year and a half now, um, for Food Policy Council, so we're thinking about expanding that to be, being, you know, having sort of more that comes under it, instead of just food, um, and, uh, and kind of just building off of that, and the beauty of it is that circles can kind of form around whatever projects, um, you know, feel important, and then be looped into the larger group and be connected, you know, across the county, um, it'd be great, you know, if somebody from the town wants to be represented there, but honestly, it could, it doesn't even necessarily have to be a town administrator, um, there's a degree to which signing onto this grant, they keep saying it's like a spiritual commitment, you know, but They keep saying it's like a spiritual commitment, you know, but meaning like a commitment in spirit, like to the principles of the grant, um. And, um, you know, even if it was a somebody, uh, you know, an individual from Blanford who. Feels really excited about the work, you know, we'd love to have that person involved, you know, whether they're involved with town government or not. So, um, there's not a ton, you know, that we're asking for in terms of commitment from the towns. Um, and like I said, you know, I don't, I, you know, I know I'm biased, but I don't really think there's any downside to signing on.
So, um, just from listening to you, I can think of two, um, projects that we're sort of plugging away in Blanford right now, that do sound like they would be connected. Um, one of those we are looking at, we should know soon if we received a grant to help with some walkability in our downtown area. Um, connecting some of our local businesses, um, and areas like the library and our, um, fairgrounds. And then the other one that we're looking at is a bit larger scale, um. We would like to talked about, um, possibly trying to apply for a mass works grant. In coalition with Springfield Water Department to turn some of the land, um. That they had, that that they own, that's Blanford land, to allow us, um, to do some passive recreation on that land. Um, so, off to apply for a grant, um. Hopefully a regional grant, working together to try to build some trails, um, and allow for more hiking in that area, so that's like sort of a big. Uh, big idea, it's a large area, but that would be huge for Blanford, if that's something that you think we could work with you at all. Like, starting like, uh, just some outreach on how we would go about that.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, for projects like that, we typically come in at the planning stages, and we typically are really supportive around community engagement. Community outreach, things like that, um, we, there is, uh, so. Mass in Motion historically, and I think that they are still planning to do this, um. Contracts with a network of technical assistance providers who can, so, who are. Have more specific areas of expertise, I would say, so for example, like Saford's to School or Walk Boston, or, um. You know, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and so these, um, other, you know, sort of technical assistance providers, that if you want a more. Technical help, um, they could support you free of cost. Um, and then our, you know, our staff time, um, if we decide to collaborate on a project is free of cost to you as well, um. And, uh, for, especially for the second project that you named, we actually recently did, um, some work, some really similar work in Belcher Town. Um, where we did a lot of visioning around a, um, an open space that the. Town wanted to sort of amp up for more, uh, well, just make it more usable for passive, um, recreation essentially, and so. You know, we did some engagement and some, you know, generated some ideas, um. Around how the town could do that in a really accessible way, particularly thinking about folks with disabilities, um. And, uh, and help them, you know, get some additional dollars for infrastructure, um, to actually execute some of those ideas, so. That type of thing is very in our wheelhouse, I think the, um. You know, the project you mentioned in terms of walkability, again, sort of like at the planning stages, engagement stages, I think that would be very in our wheelhouse, and then. You know, if it gets more technical, we'd probably want to look to our, um, network of technical assistance providers.
Awesome, that, yeah, I mean, that's, sounds like we're on the same path, it sounds like the things that you're talking about are all things that would be helpful for us. Um, I don't see a reason not to participate, do you guys have any questions?
Now, when do you meet and? You know, like. You meet in Northampton, one of the meetings, and, uh. How, how do they all work?
So I think we could figure that out, um, I think it'd be great to have like an annual meeting maybe of, you know, designees from the town or something. Um, but again, I think it's really sort of like engagement by choice, um. And we don't have, you know, this is to sign on to apply for the funding, and so we're not trying to really like. Count too many of our chickens yet, I think, you know, once we get the funding, we bring our partners back together and talk a little bit more about, you know, how do you want to do this? How do you want to make this work? What do you want engagement to look like for you? What works for you? You know, who do you want to send? That kind of thing, so, um. So we don't have a really, you know, solid plan for that yet, um. We do, you know, with the Food Policy Council, we're sort of, it's still figuring it out too, so, um. So there's not really, you know, there's nothing I could really tell you right now about, like, a stretch meeting schedule or location or anything like that, like, most people. Uh, most, you know, entities were meeting a lot on Zoom these days, so I can tell you that much, and that, that's been really, um, great and helpful, I think. Just for doing things across long distances, even though it certainly has its downsides too.
Absolutely, um, Mary, do you have a question?
Uh, yes, please, Caitlin, so. Your support is actually contingent upon successful awarding of a grant. To you or to the town?
To us, to us, yep.
And by signing on, we agree to participate in whatever comes down the park.
Yeah, I mean, you agree to participate, and it's, it's almost like signing on to the option of working with us, so it's sort of like you agree to benefit. From it in a way, you know, I, I, I don't want to make it sound too rosy, but you know, if you think about it. This is, this is a reprocurement for the next ten years of this funding, and so, you know, if anything comes up within the next ten years. And you feel like you could use a little support from us on it, then you're already signed on to the grant, we've already been working on developing relationships, and we can explore that. Opportunity together, and so, um, I think it's just great to sort of be in our, in our stable, so to speak, just so that, um, you know. We have the option of working together.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Tom, do you have any questions?
No. But I agree with TJ, we should be part of this.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, okay, do you need a motion from us, Caitlin, or do you send something for us to sign, to sign up?
Yeah, there's a participant agreement form, um, most select boards I've been going to have just, you know, been making a motion to sign the, um, participant agreement form. And then, um, I think, you know, Wendy would probably coordinate that.
Okay, um, so I would make a motion to approve the participation agreement form for Mass in Motion. You guys tie, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Um, so when we get Caitlin will sign that and get it off to you, and then, just, I guess, just be in touch with any meetings or, you know, what, what our next step is with you.
Absolutely, that sounds great, and thank you so much, really appreciate you taking the time to hear from me, um. And just crossing my fingers that we actually get the funding, so we can, uh, continue to deepen our partnership.
Well, thank you for your work, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Have a good night, everyone.
You too. Um, okay, so next up, I have, uh, I would make a motion to go to Board of Health, um, with Jennifer. Uh, which is for a, sorry, I'm skipping around on you, Joanne, I know that's.
No, no, it doesn't, it's fine.
Okay. Uh, is there a second? Uh, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, hi Jennifer, how are you?
But can you hear me today?
Yeah, yeah.
Yay, okay, so, um, I said, um, I'd come back and give you our numbers. Um, so within the past week, we've had seven, um, cases in Blanford. Seven new cases in Blanford, um, and that's where we stand, so. Uh, you know, I don't know how serious you guys. You know, want to take it, what you want to do, so. Though, those are my numbers for this week.
So seven additional this week?
Seven additional this week.
Okay, and it was.
My week starts on, um. Monday through Sunday, so.
So last week, we said that we changed our posting on the door, um, for the mass main date and our social distancing. Um, and that was when we were up five new cases, so we're up seven new cases this week.
Since Monday, yes, you've had seven. Two of them on Saturday, and then. You know, I think it was one on the twenty-third, I, I don't know, I put it down the dates, but there are seven cases, so. It's really. I know that, yeah, I mean, I've had, I know you put the sign up there, I know that I've had phone calls where people say that, you know. It's not enforced. Uh, you know, everybody has their own feeling on this, uh, you know, and I'm right there with them. You know, I just about had it with the whole thing, but. It. You know, it's about, I don't know, I don't know what to say, Kara.
I know, I, you know what, I think we, we put the signs up and we have the, the information available, and we, um. You know, we have the hand sanitizer out there, and as far as having someone whose job is to enforce that, I don't. Know.
Don't think it's as much as enforcing, as much as it is. You know, coming through the building, where's your mask, you know, um, for an example, if they go in to see Joanne. Then Joanne says, uh, where's your mask? I think it's, uh, it takes all of us to do it. Not just one, you know, person standing at the door being the police, I, it's, it's. All of us, you know, hey, where's your mask? Yeah, I mean, you're not going to sit there and beat them up if they're not going to wear a mask, I mean, it's.
It's just becomes.
It's hard.
You know, you know what I'm talking about with the argument.
About all these people that are fully vaccinated. When they come in, and they've done all this due diligence, fully vaccinated.
Yeah, and it's not like you're going to ask for a card.
For people that, that are not cooperating, so what's, what's the story with that, and how do we, uh?
Well, people who have vaccinated are getting the, um, are getting the COVID, the new variant, so. It, at this point, it's almost like the vaccination is keeping those from becoming hospitalized. And not so ill, um. So it is working to a point, but is it making it go away a hundred percent now?
No, it's because there's a lot of people out there non-vaccinated.
But if you're vaccinated. And you're coming down with it. Then what does that say?
Well, I mean, my personal thought is that we leave the signs up. Um, as they are, I don't want to dictate that, you know, Joanne being often the only one at the front is, you know. Going to be telling people to put their mask on, I don't, I just don't think that's really fair, um. I don't know, what are your thoughts, Jess?
I think it's a matter of choice, uh, if they want to come in the building and there's a mask, uh, mandate. They should put a mask, and I'm the one talking, I don't have a mask on.
I noticed that TJ.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I think that the sign sort of has to speak for itself, I mean, I. I just, I can't, I can't see us designating it as someone's duty to say, where's your mask? And then, when the person says, I'm not going to wear my mask, you know, what, what then? I'm not going to ask Joanne.
Then, okay, then it's, then it's okay, you don't need the confrontation, nobody needs to have the confrontation, I totally agree with that.
When we enter whoever's in the building wants to say like, oh, just heads up, you know, we put our sign back out, and we are, you know, reinstating the mask mandate. Um, that's fine, um, you know, if you, if you want to say that, but, or we have.
Sign again and put it right outside my office.
And do we have enough masks where we can put a box near the front door?
I can get one from the town clerk, I gave mine away last week for, uh, Delpher.
Okay, so let's do that, we'll put a box near the front door, a box on, you know, everyone's desks. Um, the accountant and whatnot that people are dealing with. Um, and then, that'll be our, our sort of big hint.
Okay, alright.
So, will you touch base with us next week and let us know where we're at again?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Alright, um, I'm moving on to unfinished business, and the first thing I see is putting Hill Farm. Wendy, do you want to fill us in on where we're at with this?
Um. Yes, I keep writing down, like, we're all set with that, I think, I, I mean, we had, you had to sign the, um. The thirty day, you had thirty days to sign that notice for the Cannabis Control Commission.
Okay.
Um, and you signed that, and I sent it in, unfortunately, the scanner scanned the wrong side of the document, so I'm going to do it again. But they, they acknowledged receipt.
Okay. Alright, cross that off, um, the TA search, do you, Mary, do you want to fill us in on how that's going?
Um, the committee met. We have a forum, and. Kate Hobson is chair.
Great.
Jen Gerard is secretary. And you have, um, community profile. With your Google, that's going to go up. Along with the job advertisement, which. Wendy says she can get into the beacon tomorrow, um, there was a question. And I was not the only one who, who had an issue with it in the job description. Um, the one that the Collins Center gave us, I've sent everybody a copy of it. In the section on page two, judgment and complexity, the last sentence. Reading the employee is recognized as an authority in interpreting the guidelines and determining how they should be applied. And it's a very broad general description, and it needs to be. Rein in, um, and again. The job description is almost verbatim to what the town of Rutland, Massachusetts has. And they changed that last sentence to read. The employee is recognized on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. As an authority in interpreting townwide guidelines, and determining how they should be applied. And in developing operating policy, uh, policies. Which makes a lot more sense to give it containment. Um, the, the county administrator cannot, he's not a scientist, or she's not going to be a scientist. To interpret guidelines from the Board of Health. Uh, nor an engineer to interpret guidelines for the cemetery about how deep to bury people. Nor an MLS to guide the library, we've got our, each department, Board of Health, Cemeteries, Library, um. Assessors, everybody has their own particular guideline, so by. Changing that, I think we're better off.
So I just say something, um, it has been, it has been a long and arduous, but terrifically fun experience. Working with Mary for hours over the last week or so on, on all of this. Um, we had this position description with Mary's, uh, edited comments in there, the one she just detailed. And I've also shared it with Michael Hale, who was working with the town, Josh and me, um, on the position description. He's fine with it, I'm fine with it, Mary, it's Mary's, I think the committee was fine, maybe, um. Uh, you were there, uh. TJ, so if you wanted to say something, um, but at any rate, I, I think it would be fine, and I support what Mary is requesting there.
Yeah, because, eh, if you read through the whole, uh. Thing, it, it says employee quite often, and. Even though they're a employee, an employee, they don't designate the office. Otherwise, what gives them the authority? I mean. Dave Waldron comes in and, you know, wants to know something, well, he's an employee. So I think the distinction is that, uh, it should say, say at least town administrator in that paragraph.
Well, that was discussed in the search committee meeting, Mary, I don't know if you want to take the lead on that, or you want me to?
Um, no, I, I would just like to change, amend that last sentence in the details of our descriptions. To read that the employee, the town administrator is recognized on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. As an authority in interpreting townwide guidelines and determining how they should be applied, and in developing policies. And. That's. What, two.
So you're just adding.
Changed.
You're just adding that they're, who they're recognized by, so they.
The town administrator is recognized as the authority. In interpreting townwide guidelines, not just blanket guidelines, but town guidelines.
Yeah.
And that makes a lot more sense.
Okay.
Because there are universal guidelines that apply to everybody in town. That's your policy manual. And that's what the town administrator will be responsible for.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me, I don't have a problem with that, um, and then just recognizing that, the, um. The authority, you're, you're naming the authority as the.
Town administrator.
On behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Right, right.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
Do you have any changes? Um, okay, how is the rest of it going, Mary?
Um, well, with that change, everything's going to be posted and up and running tomorrow.
Okay.
And we have set aside. Uh, December fifteenth is the deadline for application. uh, December fifteenth is the deadline for applications.
Okay.
Then David has scheduled a meeting for December twenty first.
Okay.
As the applications come in, they will be emailed from David to everyone in the group with a form to score them.
Okay.
And I'm not sure how he wants to either send the score sheet back or everybody will meet on December twenty first to review the scores and figure out who would, the committee will interview. And he's looking for maybe four or five, possibly six potential candidates to interview.
Okay.
And then out of those, we'll send three forward to the Board of Selectmen for interview and final decision.
Okay.
And contract negotiation.
Sounds like a plan. Peter, do you have?
Yeah, um, on page three, under skill, Mary, I, I was just looking through this before I, uh, the meeting. I think I would suggest that, um, it's, uh, I'll just say, it says, uh, after organization, organization and its services, perhaps they just should include facilitating Zoom teams or similar remote meetings, some wording to that effect. I know how, uh, how, uh, knowledgeable Josh was about setting up these meetings and what have you. And I'm, I'm thinking maybe that might be important.
So I think you have there, um, skill and utilization of technology common used by municipalities as a means of improving the effectiveness and organizations of its services. You could just add on to that, um, something, somewhere in there, add in there just, and, um, remote, uh, something about, and.
That, that's what I said, yeah.
Yeah, just.
Sentence, yeah.
How would you word that, Peter?
Well, I worded, I said, uh, municipalities as a means of improving the effectiveness, gotta put the word of the organization and its services. This should include facilitating Zoom teams or similar remote meetings. I don't know, maybe, maybe it's redundant, but.
What do you think, Mary?
I, I, I need to ask Peter where he's talking about.
Oh, uh, he, yeah, so.
Page three.
Page three, the bottom paragraph.
Bottom paragraph, um, it is the third sentence in that paragraph.
Strong organizational skill, skill and the utilization of technology common used, commonly used by municipalities as a means of improving the effectiveness of the organization. Uh.
And its services.
And its services.
Then, uh.
And communication.
Excuse me?
How about just as a means of improving the effectiveness of communication, the organization and its services?
That works.
Will that do?
I didn't hear what you said.
She just had adding the word communication before, uh, before organization.
As a means of improving the effectiveness of communication, the organization and its services.
I think that makes sense. And then if you have a question in the, um, interview about on Zoom, you know, you can ask it.
Yeah.
You can ask there.
What do you think, Wendy?
I think we better stop at this point because we keep changing it and we, we, um, we gotta move on and, and, you know, I'm, one hand, loving the community engagement, but also going, I've never seen as much community engagement around sort of an administrative function of a town, but I'm also, you know, appreciating all the input. So we gotta move on though. And, um, you know, so.
That would be the last change I wouldn't.
Yeah, I didn't real, I didn't get it. So Mary, I hope you have it. You know, send it to me, cuz I, I don't have anything in front of me.
Perfect.
So thanks.
Um, okay, so do you need anything from us right now in terms of the search or you guys?
I'll start, Mary. They're off and running. I think, I think, um, I'm very impressed with the group. I was there with them. And, um, and I myself will beat the bushes and speak very positively about working for the town of Blanford. I can say that it's been a very positive experience for me. I haven't met anyone that isn't giving everything to the community and I would just, I would really try to do my best to help you find somebody, so.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Now, well, I, I look at it this way, maybe we'll change our name from Squirrel Hill, we're all a no charge to Blanford.
Um, alright, so next up I have, um, a Blanford Sun Host Community Agreement. So this is a solar one.
Yeah, okay, um, wait a second, let me just see. You know, I followed up with everything after the last meeting. Last Monday was Tuesday before Thanksgiving and all the lawyers went away. So I have nothing new on those few items that, uh, we were following up with. Attorney Need on, um, the Springfield Water and Sewer, I, um, inter municipal agreement change that they wanted. She has not gotten back to me. I do not have anything back from Attorney Rish about, uh, what, I'm sorry, what did you just, what is the one that you're talking about right now?
Sun, um, Host Community.
Right. Oh, no, that one I was waiting to hear back from Harold. I'm thinking that we should contact Mr. Bishop because I think Harold, I know Harold is extremely busy and overextended right now. So I don't know how to reach this man, um, but if someone could help, you know, give me that information, then I'll, we'll send it to him for review.
Joanne can get you that information.
Great. And, okay, what else? Well, it's up to you.
For unfinished business and then I have new business. Um, so for new business, we already did the Healthy Hampshire. We, I've got the liquor license. Um, so I've got some licenses to sign here. Um, okay, these are always fun. So we sign down here. Do we need a motion on this? Um, Wendy, do you know?
I think it couldn't hurt.
Okay.
Um, cuz then you have a record in the minutes of having signed it.
That's right. Alright, so, um, I would make a motion to approve the, um, retail liquor license for twenty twenty-two for the Blanford Country Store and, oh, the Blanford Country Club. Is there a second? Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
So you're, this one. Alright, um, we have our expense report.
Okay, I just, um, I'm very proud to say that I figured out how to print it out myself. Uh, but we still didn't have, it does not include payroll. They, they have not yet, um, integrated that into the report, so I'll just say that.
Alright, um, so what, what are we at now? What month is it? It's almost, it's December. July, August, September, October, November, December.
I do wanna say one thing earlier when you had, uh, Chief Modder was here and I mentioned the nine thousand. That was the total amount in the town hall, town offices, maintenance and repair. It's now down to sixty-four hundred or something like that, so. Um, yeah.
Well, I mean, it sounds like the sprinkler repair is something that has to be done.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I guess we have two options. It's unforeseen, so we can either try to take it out of a capital cost or we can take.
It seems like this, this is perf, you know, it fits, that's the purpose of that account is, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And then if we need to deal with something later, we can deal with it later. Alright, so we're looking at around fifty-five, fifty-ish. So this is sideways, so this is fun.
Oh, really? Huh.
Sideways, oh, this thing?
You can turn it. I have it, I have it.
When I sent sideways.
Stay that way. Oh, wait, here, I can rotate, rotate it. There we go.
Good.
Okay, so.
I'm not trying to torture you here, Kara.
IT we already know about. Police expenses is nothing new. Where did we land on that? Oh, no, nevermind, that's fine. Um.
Remember the issue we had with the road? Fire. It's never been resolved.
Nothing has moved from Tree Warden, so that's still standing. Joanne, just, you know, Tree Warden is still where it was.
Yes, I haven't called him.
That's okay.
I'm supposed to call him today.
It's alright, it's just still hanging out there.
Um, I have not forgotten.
I have faith. Alright, I'm not seeing anything else. You guys find anything that keeps your interest?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, we have our town administrator report. Wendy, do you have anything else?
Okay, yeah, um, one is I did get to Caleb Mitchell. I sent him, well, actually, it should be before you. It's basically the same agreement you had with me, but for less money. So, um, I, I, you should have that in front of you. Was that in your packet? Um, the agreement to sign for, with him. Um, and I think it was, right, Joanne?
It wasn't there. Sorry, what did you say?
Um, asking if we have something to sign for.
Employment agreement.
Employment agreement.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think she included that, yeah.
Not for Wendy, for, um, Caleb.
Yes.
Oh, it's on.
There's two, there's an amendment for me to, cuz I, my, my first amendment expires tomorrow. And then there's amendment for me to continue through the tenth, so I have an overlap week with, um, Caleb.
Sorry, because, um, TJ has one. Oh, yeah, now, okay.
As long as you have one.
Take this stuff away from me, so I don't mess it up. Those are two things that we already signed. Look at all my clipboards.
Caleb has seen it and he's, he's agreeable and he'll sign it after you've signed.
I'm like.
Is Joanne, is this it?
Yeah, this is it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so we're looking at filling this out for the, so, um, Wendy, am I starting this the twenty-ninth day of? I'm signing it for today?
Well, you can sign it today, but it starts on December sixth. He starts on December sixth.
Okay, so I've got the twenty-ninth day. Um.
And then all on the back is where you all.
The rate, fifty dollars an hour, uh, parties, sign this twenty-ninth day of November. Alright, so I would make a motion to, um, accept the employment agreement between the town of Blanford and Caleb Mitchell as written.
Second order.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, so Wendy, you'll get, will we get it to Caleb and get his signature?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
And then I have one just to amend mine, that, again, to go through the tenth so that we have the time together, um, with a caveat that he becomes the interim town administrator. I'm there just to, um, on the sixth and I'm there, just.
What day will you start?
December sixth.
Thank you.
So I would make a motion to, um, approve the, uh, amendment to the employment agreement to extend it until December, ten. And then, um, during the period, December sixth to the twenty-first, Ms. Foxman will be working to orient the new town administrator. Um, is there a second?
Seven.
Any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Is that from Wendy's agreement?
That was from Wendy.
Wendy, so did you wanna?
Amendment, second amendment to the employment agreement.
Yeah, second amendment to the employment agreement.
Through, through December tenth. I thought you might have said the twenty-first, meaning, you know, twenty-twenty-one, but maybe I just heard you wrong.
It says December tenth, but then that during that period from the sixth to the twenty-first that you would be working with Mister.
No, six, six through the tenth.
Okay, so, okay, so on there it says the sixth to the twenty.
It does?
Yeah.
Uh, well, how about if you change it and just initial it and I'll initial it and we'll be fine.
Put Wendy's name in here so that the motion, we know she, we're talking about Wendy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, um, let me just see. Okay, what else?
Um, the other thing, one other thing, um, came up today is, um, police chief and the police budget. I, the quarterly meeting is a little overdue now. Um, Kathy was suggesting January third for the next quarterly meeting of Chester, Blanford. Whatever you call it, the select boards or oversight advisory, I don't know what, how you refer to that, but the quarterly meeting that you have, Chester and Blanford select boards have relative to the police department.
So, that's coming up, you said, or did we?
Well, Kathy had suggested, I said I'd bring it up tonight, January third, Kathy Warden, um, to meet in Blanford on January third. So I'm bringing it up for you to discuss and decide if that works and.
Um, is that a Monday?
I didn't actually check, but I can.
Um, let's see, January third, it is a Monday. Yeah, we can incorporate that into our meeting, that's fine. So if we can just add that, join, um, on the agenda for January third, would you just add, um, the quarterly meeting, um, Blanford Chester Police Department? And it'll be a joint meeting with the Chester Board.
Yep.
Um, so Wendy, we let Nancy know that we can hold that meeting here. We'll start it at six, if that works for them, and if we need to change the time, that's fine.
Is that how you do it typically? You include it as part of your meeting? Okay.
We'd include it, what we'll do is have it be a joint meeting, and so we'll do that first and then we'll close that and do just Blanford.
Okay, so six PM?
Yeah. And if they do a different time or something, we can accommodate that.
Okay. Um, uh, Ira Brzinski texted you and me, Kara, about tomorrow night's meeting. And so I said we were having this meeting now and that you would follow up. I just wanna say that, um, last Tuesday I attended, we, we spent well over an hour with the, the FRT meeting. This was the, the StanTech, who, uh, folks who have the contract to help these communities, um, with the redo projects. And they did give us a, after a, a long and detailed interview, um, a three ranking, which means that they're gonna give us all kinds of information about all kinds of resources. So, and I think Ira can talk about that tomorrow night as well, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to think about that a little, how exactly we want to run the meeting, but, um, my thought is to have him sort of, and, and you as well, report out, um, what it looks like.
No, I'm, no, I don't need to be there. I'll, he's got it all. Yeah, and I, you know, I'm wrapping up, so I wanna focus on the real critical things and, and having a really good, um, transition plan in place and, you know, just get all that detailed.
Okay.
Follow up with any bills. And then Joanne, my faithful, faithful coworker there, I cannot be more grateful for, for her, um, and I know I'm embarrassing her, so I'm apologizing also, but at any rate. Um, she's going to be, um, leaving Friday for how long?
One week.
So she'll be away. So we talked today about whether we should close the office, cuz she'll be gone the week that Caleb is starting and I'm transitioning. How, what, what do you think would work best?
I mean, without anyone anywhere, that would be pretty crazy to have them come in. You wouldn't know.
Yeah.
You know, how to.
Wait, I'm sorry.
I'm saying without anyone there, it doesn't really make sense for him to come in. I would say wait for them.
Oh, for Caleb to come in or the public?
Are you gonna be there, Wendy? You say you're.
Yeah, yeah, that was gonna be the week that we work together.
Okay, so if you're there, that's fine. I thought you said you were away and Joanne is away.
No, I'm sorry. No, 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 Joanne is away.
No.
And so.
I mean.
For your judgment about that.
I mean, but it'll be okay. Um, I would definitely still have him come to, come in, and you, you were talking about closing down the office to just have people in and out. Is that what you're saying for that week?
Yeah, maybe just to the public, you know, or whatever, some notice about, and I, Joanne might have a recommendation about.
Okay, what do you think, Joanne?
I'll make sure I, this is Gordon, by the way.
Oh, goodie.
I'll make sure I, um, I might email, tell people that I'm not here. Um, and there's no point in having.
Yeah.
The door open.
That's fine.
Because I'm the one that deals with all that, but I can put a sign on the door.
Okay.
Put it on the website that, do I say I'm on vacation? Do we just say the?
Yeah, that's fine. You can just say whatever you're comfortable with, just that you're, you know, you won't be.
And what, you know, Caleb and I will be around, you know, I'll take phone calls, we'll follow up with email. If something comes up, that's important, we'll be there, but, other stuff, okay.
I'll give you time to focus more too, without having to deal with, you know, okay, that's fine. Um, okay, I've got Gordon here to talk about uh, water stuff. Are you all set with your report, Wendy? Do you have more for us?
Um, uh, not that I can think of right now, so.
Okay. Um, so Gordon Avery is here on the phone because apparently he doesn't understand how Zoom works. Just kidding, Gordon. And.
Go get him, Kara.
Go get him. Uh, and we're gonna talk about ARPA funds. Uh, we have a list somewhere in my pile of papers of, the application. Look at you, bam. For ARPA funding.
I think I gave you a copy of that, because I didn't think you wanted to do that on your computer.
Oh, you gave me a copy. I'm sure it's under here somewhere. I think I need to clean house. Um, so Gordon, last week, the select board had a bill in front of them um, for the roughly $58,000 for the GAC filter media replacement.
Yep.
So our question, as we're, we haven't, we're, we're just starting to look at distributing, um, the ARPA funding. And we did want to do some division of, um, some local business ARPA funding, um, some stuff for infrastructure, um, you know, and a couple of different avenues. So, our total is a 336. Um, and I guess the questions that the board had were, is this GAC, um, is this a yearly fee that is something that you will have to build into your budget, or is this a one-time fee? How is this?
This, this is something that should have been like, uh, you know, like, like same thing with cleaning the filters. This is something that should have been, you know, on the radar, I've been taking care of periodically over time. So one, um, it's, and right now it's spent, that's why we're failing our numbers all the time. Um, so it became a consent order from, from the state to Tubman immediately.
Okay.
So, doing, doing everything like this is a one-time deal. So what we're planning on doing is, so next year we're changing our filters for again. This year we didn't do any filters, we did the GAC this year, so, um, next year we're gonna do filter four, mid-year, the following year we're gonna do filter three. When we change filter three out, we're going to also price in changing out the GAC at the same time. So, we'll never have a filter that's over seven years old. That includes GAC and, um, uh, the filter itself. So it's going to be built into the budget in the future, and it will be something that becomes a regular thing in roughly three years.
Okay.
And maybe a little premature on the filter, but in order to get us where everything is staggered, that's just, that's just what we're gonna have to do.
Okay.
Because, like I said, I mean, it, it costs us money every time we bring them in here, so our goal is to basically do everything from one visit to the same company, that's, you know, all of the media.
That makes sense. Um, Tom, do you have questions, Tom or TJ?
No, I understand what he's doing.
Okay.
Because he talked to me about it before, so I, I agree with what he's trying to do.
Okay.
No.
So, the goal is we don't run into a plant with, you know, 16-year-old filters that are failing.
Yeah.
We never want to get that point, so we never want to have a filter over older than seven years old.
Okay.
Then every other year, you can utilize that money that would be allocated for the filters for, you know, other major types. You know what I mean? So that money will always be in our budget, it's just every other year we can, you know, once we get to the point where we're and not in the situation we are now, we can allocate it for different things every year, so we're always doing something.
Okay.
Keep ourselves ahead of the game.
TJ had a question, but.
Now, do, we don't have our, our money in hand yet, do we?
Yeah, that's what, my question was gonna be, Wendy, how do we go about spending the ARPA Monday, money? Oh, you're muted, sorry, Wendy.
Um, you know, I said to Josh, what are the guidelines about ARPA? And he said, there aren't any. So, I thought we, I thought we would have them already for some reason. That was what I believed. Because I'm seeing them being spent everywhere. I don't think that there's a particular, I don't know, I'm sorry, I really, I'm trying to open up the document here. I, yeah, I, it would have, I, I would have hoped it would have shown in the expense report, so I don't, you know, as something unless the treasurer has it somewhere else, the accountants have it somewhere else, I'm sorry. So I'll check on that, but I thought, I thought the money was here and available for us already, but I, given that we were not imminently spending it, I didn't look more carefully to see where it was. But if someone else knows, please speak up. I don't mind someone picking up.
I, I thought that, uh, it was supposed to come either from stabilization or free cash. Because this is a, this is a bill that has to be paid. And.
You're now talking about what Gordon is asking for. Not about ARPA in generally, correct?
Correct. I, I, I'm looking, this is a bill that's gotta be paid, and if we can't rely, rely upon ARPA for this, then I would think that we would have to look at, uh, some other means. Now, I don't know, uh, we have Janet here. And, uh, well, you came. So anyways, uh, you know, if, if, uh, we should be taking this out of stabilization or out of free cash.
We'll have to come out of the water department.
The water department's doing this.
Yeah, look at their, I have, I've been, I have their expense report up. I don't know if you've got, you know, that section of our budget showing what they're. I think that if we can use, um, if we can use ARPA funds, let's, uh, in my opinion, I think that we should use ARPA funds. I know that we haven't, this is where we get into that area where we really need to look at separating these projects out, so that we aren't just.
But he had, and, and he had several others. He, um, really took this very seriously and submitted a number of things. So, and Gordon, you know, speak to it. That would be my question is, there are quite a few from water for ARPA, so what's the priority order?
Well, the thing is, is that if, uh, the water department gets everything they want, that's $300,000. That looks $36,000 for other projects.
We spoke with Josh on the whole thing, and we kind of went over it, and I, I put in for six of them.
Yeah, and that comes to.
We can kind of do without.
No, it's kind of, so, well, this is what I'm saying, you know, it's not fair to.
Tied into consent.
So what's your top priority, Gordon? I got the $58,000 for this.
Yeah, this one was the, this one was the main one. They wanted this one done yesterday. And we had to get it done before the weather started to freeze, because you can't do it in the wintertime.
Okay.
Um, the other one was basically the money for the plumbing, because, um, when the plant was designed properly, they never put any bypasses or shut offs or anything like that, so we can't even do the repairs we need unless we get a plumber in and go in and basically.
Okay.
Re-plumb one section, that's the 20,000.
Yep.
The other is the 75, that was the one that was basically for, um, the master plan, which is, um, um, required by the DDP, and is tied into, that has to be done to meet the two or three other things um, required by the DDP. And then the other one, um, was, uh, the assessment, which was 28. That one, they said, could be less, that could be 18, so it's 18 to 28. Um, we also, we have grants out for some of these, and the, the reason we're asking those amounts is because that's the difference that they, that they grant some cover. So one of them being 28, that one could be less, that could be 18, so it's 18 to 28.
Okay.
It just depends on what the state's willing to pack yields.
Uh, five, six, seven.
And like I said, we've already applied for, we got a bunch of grants out there. Um, this is basically to pick up the difference that we don't have. So don't forget, we also have state and private coming up. And with twice the material going up, that's gonna be even on the higher side. And that's, you know, that's, that's over 300,000 right there, so, you know. You look at us and say, oh, we got 100,000 in free cash, and that, that's pretty much already gonna be spent on the next, on the next year.
Yep. Um, and so then, so that would, that totals, if you, if we're looking at those four, and we're looking at the high end of the 28, that totals 189,000 in water product, projects.
Right. And, and the other, the other two, the other two, you can kind of take off.
So I've got three more.
That would be like the water line extension and, um, the, the, uh, the equipment upgrade. That's, that's, so when I talk to Josh with, with us taking those other two off, what was in there, it would have been enough money for everybody to get their ARPA money.
So the, I have three extra, Gordon. I've got a turbidity meter replacement at 48.
Yeah, taking that one off.
I've got a water inlet pipe at 50.
Yeah, taking that one off.
And I have a drop-in culvert at 12.
Uh, drop-in culvert wasn't, that wasn't for water department. That was a suggestion I put in for highway.
Okay.
At the end of Spirit Road, because right now they're like, you're like 78-foot drops in, that was for safety. That wasn't for water, that was for.
Highway.
I just submitted that, but that was for something for highway.
Got it, okay, got it, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's not a water thing. That was like, if you go down the Spirit Road, there's two culverts, but they're, they're open. And like I said, they're, they're, they're probably around seven, eight feet deep.
Okay.
Couple of dropping culverts will make it a little safer, easier to maintain, easier to plow. And, uh, you wouldn't worry about it sliding off, like I said.
Okay.
But Josh was saying, if you know anything else, I said, I know this one.
Yeah, okay.
That's not water, that's just for, that would've been a project for highway.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, so, Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple. First of all, which ARPA funds, the state or the federal ARPA funds you're talking about? And second, you have a list of suggestions for use of ARPA funds. Have you made a decision on that yet?
Those are their hands.
We have not made a decision yet. We've been, we've reached out for more information, um, for each project. We should have more information about them. So what I have is pretty, um, in front of me.
Did you get my suggestions?
I have Peter Laimore, Blanford MLP, broadband infrastructure, 20,000, very specific, $558.66. Um, is what I have from you, Peter.
And there was another one. There was two. One was, that's, or was that the total? One is for, um, the, uh, I, I don't want to.
Redundancy project.
What?
The redundancy project?
Yes, thank you, redundancy for the four towns. Um, and the other one is for the safety, uh, at the, uh, at the hut there.
Okay, and so you think that those combined would be the 20, roughly 21,000?
Doesn't sound right.
Yeah. Um, so, but the, the answer is no, we have not, um, decided specifically, we, you know, we, I know that we have time with ARPA. Um, so we're trying to be sort of careful about spending it. Um, what we had asked for is for some more information up with each, um, application that was put in, so that we can have some more details. Some of them are a little bit confusing. Um.
The other comment I had is that, you know, I like the water, because I'm a water user, but the water does not sup, uh, supply everybody in town. So even though that's an infrastructure, it, it doesn't affect everyone in town, whereas.
Yeah.
These other projects.
I know that, that, yeah, that's been sort of a longstanding sort of discussion in town. I think the, the way I feel about it is that the fire hydrants protect everyone in town, so, I mean, most people, correct?
No.
If you're not on the line.
If you're not on the water line, you don't have a fire hydrant.
Oh.
And fire pumps have been outlawed, haven't they?
Yep.
So what do you do then? That's why we have the.
That's why we have a tank coach, and we call in all we can find when we get a fire.
I mean.
Here's an example of why you need, uh, you need this money. They fill the tanker truck up there this weekend, right?
Yep.
We have little lines on Russell State Road. Well, when you fill about the 12-inch line, and when you shut those hydrants after a while, you run the risk of causing damage with water hammer or anything else. Well, you broke a line here this, you know, this weekend. I mean, and it's basically because you're, you're dealing with antiquated old infrastructure. Now, we weren't anywhere close to where the pipe broke, but unless we fix all this old infrastructure, it's gonna do nothing but continue to cost us even more money. So, and like I said, the longer we wait to fix it, the more it's gonna cost. Materials will end up. Like I said, I, I went over this with Josh, because he asked me because we got, we are, for a lot. But he said, with us taking those couple items off, there should be enough money in the ARPA that, that every, everyone gets filled.
And the other thing is that this is ARPA funding to, to supply money for these big projects, so this isn't, you know, using tax dollars, you know, to supply that money. So that is kind of nice, you know, and that these are projects that I know the water department has had.
But first and foremost, the ARPA was to, uh, pay for lost, uh, revenue from businesses in town. You know, so those gotta be considered before we go in spending on a lot of projects.
But I think that we might be able to afford to, uh, do it all.
Well, I think Josh just said that to Gordon.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
So if you.
With us taking those couple items off, the, I just gave you the four big ones that we need. And like I said, the, the main reason we need that too is, you know, we can get a lot of this done at pretty much no cost to any taxpayer, any water user, because we can supplement it with, with grant money. I mean, and that will basically keep the funding we have available to go towards the upgrades, which, you know, is gonna cost us a little bit in the end. So the whole idea is, you know, that to stretch that dollar as far as we can, we have a beautiful opportunity to do that right now.
Yeah.
You know, and like I said, we're, we're taking a couple, you know, a couple of big items off that we're hoping to do, and we'll, we'll figure it out later. But, um, you know, the, the state is basically at this point telling us, you know, we need this done, and so we have, you know, we have until next year to finish, like our master plan and our, you know, our assessments, they all have to be done before next, before the end of, like, next year. You know, it sounds like a lot of time, but you know how things go, it's, it is not a lot of time.
Um, so I would, I would motion to, um, to pay the Carbon Filtration System, Inc., uh, invoice for $57,609.38 um, for the work done through the water department using the ARPA funds. Is there a second for discussion?
Do you want an amount on there?
Yeah, it's a 57, 609, 38 cents.
If we don't have the ARPA funds, we can't spend it.
That's right.
Well, let's do a second for discussion.
All right, second for discussion.
Okay. Um, so my thought is, I agree with you. I think we, I think that we have to, we, we have to ask Wendy to sort of do some investigating on how we go, I have, I go about spending money, but I would like to use some ARPA funding to pay for this. I think it's just figuring out exactly how to do that.
Well, it, the bill's gotta be paid, so if we take the money from stabilization and pay the bill, and then we can go, once we know what the ARPA is, and then take whatever ARPA money is and reimburse the, uh, pre-cash or stabilization. I don't know if that's legal or not, but.
I don't think we can pay out of stabilization, because it's water department. It's not a town stabilization. Because it.
Do you think that something, does the. Did you think that something, does he don't have a special town meeting?
Uh for stabilization, yes.
Yeah, you need a two-thirds vote usually to take it, move it to.
What about the cash?
I don't think we have any free cash.
What do they have, they have retained earnings, what did?
Yeah.
Okay, so, using water department monies or town monies, or, you know, clarify that, I guess. I will, me, tomorrow I will find out about the status of the funds. Um and I just want to respond to something Peter said.
Mm-hmm.
We were hopeful the state was going to be giving with their money that they were gonna give to communities. There'd be more specific kinds of things that would help, but they seem to be spending it on things that are not so much the kinds of things Blanford would be. Seeking for, s- seeking, it's more like community, public health education and things like that, but not things that are on the list that we've got. Um but any rate, so back to the topic, um. Yeah, are you gonna use town monies or um u- users, water user money?
If we can just use direct ARPA funds, that would be ideal, but I don't understand the process, so I guess.
I don't, yeah, and I, I'll get on that and let you know as soon as I do, I'll write you all and let you know about that.
Okay, so can we hold on this, um it's past due, Gordon? Um it was due the twenty-first. What are your thoughts on reaching out to the company and just letting them know we're, just trying to figure out how to spend our ARPA money?
Yeah, I can give them a call along the way.
Okay. Um so let's keep this on the agenda, maybe as an action item for next week, and then Wendy, if we have that information. Maybe you can do some research about um if we can spend ARPA fu- funds to pay this, or if there's a process we have to go through.
Absolutely, I'll get on that, um can I ask a question while Gordon's still here? Um uh he, I sent an email to to both him and um. Uh she was just here, she left, um the board of health, I got in a call, I got an email from someone in Blanford. Who was wondering if we had the money that other communities have to do PFA testing on private wells. And, you know, acknowledge that Gordon is, you know, involved with our public water system, but I thought he might know. I didn't, uh Jen, I didn't hear back from either of them, and I'm just wondering if either of them knew, or anybody else knows about this program.
Wendy Gordon saying he only does public water, right, but did he happen to know about this, that's all.
I have water, they have to call in, they have to call in somebody that tested. Because we would be middleman, because all we would do is pull the sample and bring the sample to the lab.
Right, and I I wrote to Jen because this would be a board of health issue primarily, and I sec- I included you because you would, you might know, so.
Hold on, Gordon.
He can't hear, yeah.
And they would basically give you the tip, you would come up, you would pull your sample, bring it down to them and get it tested that way.
Okay. Alright, um, okay, so Gordon, uh so let's uh table that motion until next meeting. Gordon.
Mm-hmm, how do I do that?
Uh make a motion to table.
Okay.
That motion until the next meeting, is there a second?
That's it, okay. I've never seen this.
On favor?
Aye.
Alright, alright, so um we're gonna move on, we have Mr. Robinson here to talk about, I'm sorry that you've been waiting so long. To talk about um. Which road, hold on, it's at the tip of my tongue.
Sperry.
Sperry Road, thank you. Um Gordon, you're all set with us?
Yeah, but I wanna hear what happened on Sperry Road.
Alright. You hang on the line, um welcome, Chris, you, if you wanna unmute yourself and just tell us a little bit about what we can help you with. Here, I'll send you an unmute invitation, that might help.
He's not making a grade.
There we go, perfect.
Okay, no.
Oh, I can't hear you though, um.
You should have a picture of a microphone with a line across it and click on that.
He's unmuted, but that didn't work, so, Chris, in your bottom, um right, left-hand corner. There's uh the microphone, there's a little carrot arrow next to the microphone. If you click that little arrow. Um of something comes up and you can hit uh test your speaker and microphone.
Have him dial in.
So you're unmuted, um. I'm so sorry, you've been waiting for so long, it, okay, right where you just were unmuting, there's a little, there's a little um carrot that. Um I don't know if I can send it in the text box to you, um. It looks like. No.
Can we call it?
It looks like that, but they sent it different direction, I just sent you a message, it looks like that little carrot. But it's facing in the other direction, right next to the microphone. And when you click on that carrot, there's gonna be a menu that comes up with options. And it says test speaker and microphone, it's gonna bring you through. If that doesn't, if that doesn't work for you, you can call us, though, um. You can call in, what's the best number to call in? Let me look. Um I have to look on the invitation.
He must have that, because he's. He zoomed in, so he's gotta have that information.
Valid point. Alright, so let's. Alright, here we go. Okay, so, Chris, I just sent you in the message. Um the first number is the eight, seven, one, one, six, zero, seven, 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 one, zero, that's the meeting ID number.
That's for the Zoom.
For the Zoom, and then the phone number is below. If you got that, can you give me a thumbs up? Okay, thumbs down, oh. That's not good. Um so if you ca- you don't see that message on your screen.
Can you, can you hear us, I'll give you the number, one, nine, two, nine. Two, zero, five, six, zero, nine, nine.
Did you get that whole number, okay? When you, when it ring, when it answers, you're gonna put in the the ID number for the meeting. If you have a pen, I can give you the ID number, okay, eight, seven, one, one, six, zero, seven. Seven, seven, one, zero. We'll wait patiently. Because Zoom is a nightmare.
They changed our Zoom meetings and uh find your valid sign and commission, and now we can go directly to Zoom.
Oh, you don't have to wait in the waiting room?
Right, and and it'll, and it just disappears.
Oh, here you go, you're coming in. Okay. Alright, so I should be able to hear you through here, I'm not hearing you.
Can you hear me? Hey, I'm sorry. Hello.
Okay, there you go, now we're perfect, Chris, alright, go ahead, tell us.
Yeah, I I had to turn the laptop off because it was reverberating back and forth, and it was just a mess.
Well, thank you for persevering through that, how can we help you?
Well, I would, I saw the update on Sperry Road, and so I wanted to uh listen in to see what the update was on there. Um the issue that I've been having is, we have a severe leaching issue. On Sperry Road that leaches onto my property. I've had a couple different uh meetings with Mr. Garcia, which is no longer there, with Mr. Rainey, which is no longer there. And there's one of the board members that is there now, that was in there. Um and I was just kinda looking for an update. I'd saw it on the docket a few weeks, and I'm I'm back into where I don't know what's going on, I'm being told that I have a. Underground spring issue is what I'm being told, and this is mountain water runoff problem. And the water sits on the side of Sperry Road, and it just sits there. It sits there, and it sits there, and it sits there, and it leaches. And my issue is, you can't do anything with the property. I I can deal with water going through my property. Cutting through from Sperry Road, new Sperry Road to old Sperry Road like it is when they put in that pipe. But the issue that I'm having is, it is the entire four acres. That I have up there on Sperry Road, that is getting leached on. And when you walk through the entire piece of property, even in my big, beautiful field that I have there. You stand in splashing water. And I was told by a lady on the end of the street that this field did pass a perk test. At one point in time.
Hmm.
The lady lives on the end of Sperry Road for forty-six years. She told me she's on one of the committees in town that has to do with the internet.
Okay.
I was just hoping that the town would wanna update the drainage system in there that was implemented when they put the road in. Because there has been zero maintenance done on that. I can see since, what, sixty-eight, when the road was put in, nobody's done anything to the road. And I'm just wondering if the town decides. If they're gonna do anything, because the town doesn't have an issue coming and asking me for my tax money. But I can't do anything with the property except stand up there on Sperry Road, look at it, go, boy. Would be really nice to be able to put a house out in here someday, but it's never gonna happen, because it'll never pass a perk test.
So what was the conversation that you had with um Josh and Rainey, how did, how did that conversation go?
Well, I still have the emails where I was told by Mr. Rainey that Mr. Rainey was gonna come in here. And he was gonna put in new concrete catch basins for me, redirect the water anywhere I wanted, because I explained to him also. That I also have a pond down in the back. And it looks like at one point in time, somebody did try to do something to do. They came in and dug something out, and it looked like they tried to divert the water. I've been spending every single day on this property for the last year, digging a trench. By hand, because I can't get any equipment in there, because you stand in mud over your ankles, so I can get the water. So I can walk in semi-firm ground. And it's just. Hoping that somebody's, somebody's gonna open their eyes and see that there is an issue here and wanna work with me.
Mm-hmm.
Cause the old administration that's no longer here, and I have an email from Mr. Garcia. That told me blatantly that he had no intentions. And I still have this email on fixing the issue on Sperry Road. And I think I've been treated unfairly on this too. I've been promised the world, and I got set up for failure.
Um so, what, I don't have any specific answers on Sperry Road, because I would have to talk to our highway department, um.
I spoke to him a few weeks back, and his first words out of his mouth to me was. Oh, I was told that you have an underground spring issue. Those were his exact words, and I don't even know this man.
Mm-hmm.
I've never seen the man, he could be standing right in front of me, and I I couldn't tell you who he is.
So, um Dave.
That's what's going around up there, that people think we have an underground water, a spring issue going on. And there is not an underground spring issue, when I can sit here and look across. And see fifteen feet across, and it's three feet of water. And we've got trees growing in the middle of it, and we have driveway um culverts that the water is supposed to drain through.
Mm-hmm.
And it just sits there stagnant. Water doesn't drain, but Mr. Rainey told me it drains, wh- when he was there looking at it. That's what I was told in the meeting up there.
So, um what I can do, so I can reach out to um Dave. And, you know, the experts we have in that area, I can talk to Rainey and see what, you know, see if he can fill me in on some of the information he has. Um and we can.
Still have the email from Mr. Rainey, I can, I can give you that email, I still have the email that Mr. Garcia sent me. I can send you that copy of that email as well.
Sure, you can email it to me, my email address is C. Letender. Um last name, L-E-T-E-N-D-R-E.
You affiliated with any motocrossers?
That I know of. And that's.
Not that you know of?
Not that I know of.
I know a Letender that was a pro, so that's all.
As my husband's family. Um C. Letender at townofblanford.com.
What's the first initial?
C, yes, that's correct, C, yes.
Um so why don't you forward that information to me? Tonight on our agenda, if you can forward those emails to me, tonight on our agenda, we just had an update. Um on Sperry Road, but it was actually under tabled items, so it wasn't something we're, we are necessarily had any information gathered or we're planning to talk about tonight. Um, but we can.
Oh, that's okay, I, yeah, I've just seen it on there a few weeks, and I've been trying to get in, but. I couldn't use my iPhone, I couldn't use my iPad, so I had to go out and get a a laptop, so this is the first I've been able to to get in here.
All in, just do what you're doing now, because that seems to be working, um we can put it on the agenda for next week, um. Joanne, if you can put it under unfinished business, and then we can try to gather the information that we have. Um from what you send me, and I'll have a conversation with Rainey and um and Dave, and then we'll touch base and see where we can go from there.
Alright, well, I thank you very much for your time and and the the board's time, thank you.
Thank you, you have a good evening.
You too.
Um, okay, so I think that's all on our agenda, unless, um Wendy, unless you have any new business for us?
No, um I just, I'm not really saying goodbye yet, but I'm saying goodbye, you know. Of, I expect that I'll be zooming in next week, and hopefully Caleb will be there with you, um.
Oh, Gordon hung up, so.
Gordon hung up, oh. So I just sent the email to our financial people and C.C., do you care about ARPA funds, so hopefully we'll have word right away. And Mary and I will connect and get the changes that you uh uh voted on tonight in the position description, so we get everything advertised and posted. I don't, I don't know where else the search committee decided to advertise, uh beyond the beacon, um but they'll, they'll figure that, they'll. Figure that out.
Um, okay, so I guess I will call Gordon, or no, I'll call Rainey, I'll call Rainey and Dave. And then we'll see. Alright, um that's it, we can, oh, Peter, do you have something else, sir?
You want a one-minute update on the status of the internet?
Sure.
So. We have eighty-eight percent of people signing up and telling.
Oh, great.
Percent.
That's good.
Either cold or not. Right now, uh there are three hundred and four active accounts, which is sixty-seven point seven percent.
Okay.
Are active. And uh they're pretty much done with the construction, uh with the, just one more road.
Is that hair?
And when they're done there.
Okay.
They're done.
Alright, that's exciting, thank you, good work. Mary, you got extra?
Um I I got this thing from Pamela right out about the Golden King history.
Yeah, I don't think um surely anything that we need to do anything with. Uh so. Yeah, we got it, we saw it.
Okay.
Thank you. Great, um with that's it, we will close the meeting at seven fifty. It's been real, thank you, hi Wendy, have a good night. Alright, I can end the meeting here.